December 12th, if we could first start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So first we'll start with public comment. If anybody is here and would like to speak, please come on up to the podium.
Turn that counter on so I have an idea what my time is?
Yes, we will. Once you start, we don't want to start early.
Hold on, let me get my page here.
Oh, and then just also-
Yeah, right.
Is it on our agenda, the Legacy Hills?
No.
Okay.
Okay. My name is Jeff Ax, 3821 Crest Lake Drive. I'm also HOA president of Woodcrest Lakes Homeowners Association. I'm here because there was last week the possibility of an agenda item about Legacy Hills Condominium Association requesting an approved site plan for a development that occurred in 2016. That site plan was, they've pulled that request to come before your board for approval on that site plan because of irregularities in the documentation that we uncovered. I'm here because I'm expecting that they're going to come back again. Just a brief history, in 2016, it was a pretty contentious development in which an agreement was forged between the neighboring community and the builder to allow for a conservation easement and certain setbacks and non-disturbance lines. In 2019, prior to the developer handing over the association to the development to the association, they asked for enlarged decks. Two of your members here on the boards were sitting then as in different positions voted no on that because of the, basically, the contention of what was negotiated, but they got that approval in 2019 for enlarged decks. In June of this year, they've come back and asked for increased patio sizes, and they withdrew their petition then for an as-built site plan. Again, this is not something that has been finalized. Their site plan hasn't been actually formally turned over and approved by the township, so that's why they're asking for as-built. As-built is not conforming to the original site plan. In June, they pulled that application because they didn't provide the correct documentation. They came back again, and it was supposed to be on the agenda this month at this meeting, and we found out that, and I found out, that they are encroaching within the setbacks and on the conservation easement. Now, I suspect they'll come back again, but at what point does the township require the developer to put in actual documents that are accurate, because there are engineering drawings that are now proved to be inaccurate. But what's most concerning is the conservation easement that was fiercely negotiated, a four-acre parcel to the west, has been encroached. That's a trespass. So regardless of what the developer plans to do going forward with another stab at this to get this site plan approved, there is a current encroachment on a conservation easement which is a trespass, and I'm hoping that the township will, it doesn't matter what reason, there's a drainage pipe or a trespass, that there are right now issues with the conservation easement that are being trespassed upon by the developer and the HOA from this condo association. So I'm looking for action prior to the, what's probably the subsequent coming back to get the setbacks on the lines of disturbance increased. So I'm hoping that there can be some interest in that before they come back. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else like to come up and speak?
Oh, no comment back to you? Okay, I'm sorry.
No, just your chance to tell us all of what you think.
Hi, I'm Frances Martinson. I've lived in the township since 1974. On December 2nd, as many of you know, probably all of you know, there was an incident at Temple Bethel and anti-Semitic commentary as well as racial. I'd like to know what the board thinks about the police action during that situation. Yes, Temple Bethel will be having on this Wednesday night commentary, but most of the people that are there will be probably Jewish. I would like to know what the board thinks about exactly what the police did and how they handled it, and why we're not getting information from them as to the strategies that they use. They might have beautiful strategies. I mean, seriously, they might have something in mind that we're not aware of, but I think the commentary or the communication from the police is not what I would like it to be. So I'd like to have the board, you've got two minutes, if you could just give some comments on that, please. Thank you.
We don't handle it that way. We let everybody tell us and then-
Okay, then could you put it on the agenda to be looked at by the board, let's say, you know, maybe two weeks' agenda from now, and have you all look at it and see what you think? Is that a way to do this?
Is that the end of your comment?
Yeah.
Again, we don't respond to comments, but do you want to add any more to us?
No.
And then once comment is done, we can start our discussion of, and that might be included in it as well.
Okay, but should it go on the agenda? I mean, can you make it like a line item on the next agenda meeting?
Is that your comment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like you to do that. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Would anybody else like to join us for public comment? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Before we go into that, as was mentioned, there is an event. It is a register-only event, because again, this is for our Jewish community to learn about what has happened and how we've worked together with the Federation, the Jewish Federation and the Jewish community's security. I'm guessing, you know, I wasn't the only non-lawyer, non-law enforcement person that watched videos, and we don't understand the laws quite as well. I thought there was a trespass. There's not. I thought it was a traffic stop. It was not. So that is why we've put out Coffee with Kerry to help explain to people. There have been actually a lot of media relations over the last week that anybody can look up on 247, all of them, where we try and explain how, when you're de-escalating a situation, how you behave, and also how frankly, whether we want it to happen a certain way or not, the Constitution protects people of all, you know, I think somebody just quoted a judge that said, "The Constitution is what we follow," and that's what our officers did. However, we are working with the Federation on ways we can improve communications going forward. Again, that's why we're focused right now with the Jewish community, who is the most affected. But if anybody else would like to go on our website, they can look at Coffee with Kerry, and Chief Gallagher spent about a half hour talking about this event. You can go on 247, you know, and any of them, and look up some of the times that Chief Gallagher has been online talking about this. That can help explain, you know, the laws that, what they did. Some people called it a traffic stop. It was not a traffic stop. There were no traffic laws broken. So I know some people were very frustrated that he didn't need to prove ID, but it wasn't a traffic stop. Again, these are things that us that are not lawyers, us that are not law enforcement, we see something on social media and we jump on it, and we don't always have all the information. However, this was a man who came to attack our community, and let's focus on the fact that there is hate out there. It is exponentially on the rise, and we need to protect our community. So that is why we've been working with the Jewish Federation on how we can protect ourselves going forward, how we can better communicate, like I said, and thank goodness, we have representatives to help us with that. We have three representatives here on the board who are able to connect us even better with that community. We have had a strong relationship with the Jewish Federation for decades. They've sent officers to Israel. We have trips that we take to the National, or to the Holocaust Museum. There already was one scheduled for January, because there just was one about a month or so ago. So I know some people think that there's not a connection. There's a very strong connection with the police and the Jewish Federation, as well as the community. And I would suggest that anybody who isn't aware of, like myself, who's not a lawyer and not a law enforcement officer and is still unsure of why things were played out the way they were, I would highly suggest watching Coffee with Kerry and the chief. I would highly suggest watching some of the videos and media relations that chief has done, or we also will be able to, we might, we are recording the event for those that are not able to attend at Temple Bethel, so that that can be given out as well. But I think it's one thing to see in today's society when people are quick to fight, and you see people being pulled down to the ground and fights happen. I can't explain those kind of things away, and I certainly am glad that I didn't have to, because our officers did not respond and take the bait. So I'm thankful that, in my mind, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm speaking as myself, I am thankful that that did not escalate and the man was home. I cannot tell you about all the different things that they do. An example would be if you knew that every time somebody called in a bank robbery, every car went there. A robber will call on that bank and go rob another. There's a reason that you and I are not allowed to know all the techniques that the police use, because then it's very easy for the criminals to know all the techniques that the police use. But when that man was a threat, we did continue to work through the day, although what he did on-site was not trespassing, and he had a different demeanor on-site than he did later when we all saw what the officers did not see, which was all of the social media. That's when he went down that path, and we were able to catch him doing something that we could actually take to the prosecutor's office, and it was taken on Friday night. I know some people thought we didn't do anything until Sunday, when the prosecutor's office finally ruled on what we gave them on Friday, and I'm thankful that they did. But our officers, a lot of us were here Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday night, until we knew that it was done. And this man was, we knew where he was. I cannot tell you how we knew all this, but there's, the Jewish Federation was able to tell all of their people that there was no imminent danger. We were able to tell that. We just cannot tell you why, and that's to protect you from future criminals. And again, I understand the frustration, because I am not a lawyer. I am not a law enforcement officer, so I had the same assumptions. It is on us to learn why they did what they did and learn why. The media has been very kind to both sides for a reason. The community has been kind to both sides for a reason, and it's on us to learn, why wasn't that a trespass? Well, because there was a public access in a private area. Why didn't he have to show ID? It was not a traffic stop. So sometimes it's very quick and easy to jump on everything you see on social media. I know a lot of people commenting on our threat are not even from the state of Michigan, so it definitely reaches a lot of people. But I don't want to minimize the fact that a man came to attack our people. He came to attack our community, and the fear that our Jewish community feels on a daily basis is on the rise. That is the most important thing, and that is what we're going to fight to try and prevent in the future. And I'm so thankful to the Jewish Federation for everything they have done with us. So I apologize, I didn't have anything prepared. I hope that made sense. And again, that was just from me. That is not speaking on behalf of the board. I don't know if anybody else wants to take a moment to speak to the public. I'm willing to offer that time.
So I just, I want to echo the supervisor's sentiments, but I'd also like to say that in addition to my service on the board here at the township, I'm also on the board of Jewish Community Security, which is a nonprofit company that was formed through the Federation to take over all of the security, the physical security of our community asset citywide. And that's a board that I'm very proud to serve on. I previously served on the ADL, which is the Anti-Defamation League Regional Board, and that's how I got involved with community security. I'd be happy to talk to anybody, any resident, at any time about what took place and how our team responded, our police, our leadership team. And so, you know, and as Danny said, Chief Gallagher has had several public opportunities to address the situation and the police response. This coming Wednesday will be a community event. It is not just restricted to the Jewish community, but as Danny said, for security reasons, you do have to register with your information, but it is not required. So that's what I, this is an issue that I take very seriously and have taken very seriously, and I want the community to know that, you know, I feel very strongly that the township really responded, and we got the guy, and he's facing some serious charges.
I totally agree with what Danny had said. Well-stated, by the way, and heartfelt and very accurate. I really, first of all, most people know I'm also, besides an attorney, I'm a psychologist, and there was no question about it, that this individual did everything possible to bait the police department and the police officers, and I have to commend them for not taking the bait, for trying to defuse the situation, and I'm certainly very proud of our police department, and I think they did an exemplary job under very, very trying and difficult circumstances. It could have gone the other direction. We've seen too many cases in the past, well, in Detroit in the past couple of weeks and around the country, where the police departments, they do not diffuse the situation, especially when you have a mentally ill individual, and unfortunately, they end up being shot, wounded, or killed. And that didn't happen here. So they were on top of it. As Danny said, we can't say how they were able to monitor what was going on with the individual, but they were, and nobody was physically injured. So again, I have nothing but great things to say about our department. Our chief has been out there communicating on our website, on the news stations. There's going to be another event on Wednesday, which will be very helpful, where he will be there along with Prosecutor Karen McDonald and Jewish Federation and Anti-Defamation League representatives. So certainly opportunities to speak about this, and it's certainly a concern for everybody in our community, and it's something that we all take very seriously.
I guess I would only ask, I guess, number one, concur with everything that's been said. And I guess, number two, there's always lessons to be learned in almost every aspect of what happened here. And I would just suggest to the general community that, you know, we always hear and see, you know, when you see something, say something. And unfortunately, in this situation, the security guard at the temple did an excellent job, and he called dispatch. No one else at the scene called 911. And I'm not blaming anyone. I'm just suggesting that, you know, when we're involved in a situation that we think is compromised, is dangerous, that's what 911 is about. And I think as we go on, we're going to, hopefully, all learn a lot more, where, again, you know, there may be room for improvement, and I think there's also going to be a lot of areas where we can be very proud of what happened and what didn't happen. And again, move forward stronger. It is very difficult for all of us this time of year to, you know, we're focused on the holidays and good things, and this kind of hate is spewing, and, you know, while we may see it nationally, we may see it in different areas, we don't expect it to see it in our, at our front door. And this clearly was our front door, and this isn't just really an attack on, it is an attack on Jews, but it's an attack on freedom, I think, in general, and we have a lot of minorities in a lot of communities that live in Bloomfield, and, you know, that have echoed those same concerns. So I think this is an opportunity where we all have to come together and really work to root out hate, and maybe the best way to do that is, quite frankly, to be kinder to each other and just not allow it to enter. Because, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to end people that have that kind of hate, but maybe to make it us more comfortable in terms of living together, just to, quite frankly, to share the concern that you're sharing, and I think we all appreciate that. And the community has reached out in many ways to us as board members, and we do appreciate and listen to every single person, and we, I believe me, it's reflecting our conversation at the various levels that we're dealing with. So thank you.
Thank you. No, no. Anybody else here for public comment? Oh, that's right, I already closed it. I'm sorry. Sorry, this threw me out. It's been a rough week for our township. So next, we'll go on to approving the board minutes of November 28th. Unless there are any changes, we've all had a chance to look them over.
So move.
Motion by trustee Varnat.
Support.
Support by trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. So next, we'll go on to the presentation of the 48th District Court, and tonight we have Patrick Dunn here, who is the court administrator.
Good evening. Thanks for having me here tonight. My name's Patrick Dunn. I'm the court administrator of the 48th District Court, and I'm pleased to be here tonight in person to present the 2023 budget on behalf of the judges of the 48th District Court. I know tonight's agenda included our written proposal for the budget, and the judges and I took quite a bit of time on that written proposal, because we wanted you to see how the court has been operating over the last year and some of the recent changes that have impacted the operations of the court. These changes include the continued use of Zoom for the benefit of the public and police agencies we serve where appropriate, and the full return of in-person criminal proceedings. The goal of the judges and the staff at the 48th District Court is to provide a fair and unbiased forum for the resolution of all disputes. All parties entering the court are treated with courtesy and respect. Every individual is entitled to his or her day in court, and it is the court's obligation to ensure due process is afforded to all. We strive to run our operation in a manner which is accessible, efficient, and timely for those we serve. The court operates on a calendar year and is subject to an annual audit. Chief Judge Mark Barron, Judge Diane DiAgostini, and I presented the court's proposed budget for 2023 to representatives of Birmingham, Bloomfield Township, and West Bloomfield on November 30th, 2022. The costs of operating the court and the fees collected by the court are shared by these three funding units based on caseload percentage. For 2022, the township of Bloomfield has advanced the court approximately $2 million towards the overall operation of the court. These funds have been used for employee salaries, benefits, quarter, court operations, professional fees, security, and capital improvements. The court is proposing a total budget of $4,834,223 for the operation of the court in 2023. Based on current year projections, the township of Bloomfield would advance $1,990,000 of that amount. We recognize the increase in the proposed budget for next year, but the inflationary rise in expenses that all businesses are experiencing is likewise present at the court. The court is also trying to retain our highly-trained staff as we respond to ongoing legislative changes and the implementation of electronic filing. While the court has always been diligent in the managing of its budget, it realizes the township has had to use more of its general fund resources to finance the operation of the court due to the departure of Bloomfield Hills as a funding unit. Knowing that employee salaries and benefits account for a substantial portion of court expenses, the following measures have been taken by the court. At the end of 2019, the court had 37 employees. The court currently employs 33 people, five of which are part-time, to help reduce the number of employees utilizing the court-sponsored medical insurance and receiving court-sponsored retirement contributions. To achieve this reduced staff level, the court has not filled an open law clerk position for Judge DiAgostini, an open cashier position, and has decreased supervisory personnel from three to two. Employees hired after 2007 are not eligible to receive retiree healthcare benefits and receive a reduced contribution to their retirement plan. The court is likewise closely reviewing all equipment leases and service contracts to try to reduce monthly payments and maintenance costs. We believe our budget is reasonable and necessary. We shall continue to strive for an efficient operation that is always protective of taxpayer dollars. Any unused budget funds will be returned to the funding units. Thank you for your time and consideration tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I know that, my understanding is that there is a power presentation where I think it's, they probably put the entire part-
Right.
-of the budget proposal. I'm happy to go through any portion of that or all of it if anyone has any questions.
Anyone have those questions? And if so, if you let us know the page, we can pull it up.
Wait, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
How much is our, I'm looking at the deck. I can't find our budget contribution. I see the total budget. I see a breakdown, and then I see distributions, but I don't see what our budget contribution is.
Yes. Your budget contribution is, I believe, in there. I provided that as part of the verbal presentation, just to give you an idea of what you might be looking at based on how 2022 caseload percentage is going. So the township of Bloomfield's caseload has dropped somewhat, so while this last year you contributed, based on our current projections of caseload, it would be slightly below $2 million for 2023 based on this proposed budget amount, total budget amount.
Okay.
Would it help if we pulled up the PowerPoint so you could show where it is in here?
Yeah, I don't know if that portion of it, yeah.
Okay, and then the judicial reimbursement, I know the state pays the salaries of the judges. Is that correct, or is it one judge?
The state does pay for the salary of the judges. A portion of that is paid through our payroll. The state reimburses fully that portion. As a matter of fact, they send a check to the township based on where the court is located, and then that reimburses. The other portion of the judge's salary is paid to them directly by the state of Michigan, but their entire salary is paid by the state of Michigan. It's just a portion of it works differently.
You mentioned that the funds and the budgets are audited?
Yes.
Can you discuss briefly the outcome of the most recent audit?
Yes. So the audit is to not only make sure that the court is, how, that all the advancements that we receive from the funding units are properly allocated to our expenses, but it also covers the court revenue, fines and costs, fees that the court collects for cases. So what the auditors do is they kind of separate both of those. They start with court revenue, fines and costs that come into the court, and they take a sample of cases. So they'll provide us, on the first day of the audit, they might provide 60 to 80 cases that will be polled, and they will go through those cases to make sure that the court is allocating the fines and costs that come in on a case in accordance with the law and in accordance with the operating agreement. On the expenditure side, and they will make sure that the court is, how the advancements come in, what expenses are being paid by the court, and they'll make sure that all that money balances and reconciles. They will also audit the caseload percentage. So once again, they take a sample of, you know, they don't go through every case, but they go through a sample of cases to, and see that we are attributing each case to the correct funding unit or subunit to make sure that the caseload is correct.
And the last audit was a clean audit result?
It was a clean audit result, yes. Yes, and we provide that audit to the funding units. At the same time, we also do a true-up. So basically, what we do, we've been, we give the, each funding unit a monthly disbursement at the beginning of the next month of what revenue came into the court. We hold that revenue back for the months of October, November, and December until after the audit is completed. They do a true-up, and then we issue the final revenue check to each of the funding units based on the correct caseload percentage.
Great. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Just a comment, just also, looking at the packet that you supplied. So it also looks like the court is in need of upgrading the computers and some of the software. It's been very dated, so that's part of the proposal for why these funds are needed. In addition-
Somewhat, yeah. We have tried to offset that quite a bit. One of the revenue that does come into the court, besides what the funding units advance to the court, is the state of Michigan does provide, at the end of each year, they look at how many drunk-driving cases have been processed by the court, as well as drug-driving cases, and they issue a check to the court. It's called the drunk-driving fund. We have utilized that fund in communication with the funding units this year to up- with the funding units this year to upgrade our computers down in the probation department, anywhere that we can better effectively process drunk-driving and drug-driving cases. So we have been able to offset some of those costs for computers, new hardware and software. We also were able to offset some of those costs with a grant from the Michigan State Police for COVID, anything related to COVID expenses. So we were able to offset some of those expenses by use of those grant funds. We received about $15,000, a little bit less than what we would have liked to and what we applied for, but unlike the prior year, they decided to award courts that were struggling with backlog of trials. Those courts were allocated the most amount of money from the grant funds. We had were lucky enough to get through all our trials and get back on track, so we had a smaller amount that they allocated to us.
I'll teach you.
Job well done.
Unfortunately, they didn't
No good deed goes unfounded.
Yeah, they didn't let us know that in the application process, only in how they awarded them afterwards.
Is there a motion that we need?
So the motion would then be to accept and approve.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Showstack, supported by treasurer keeps. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. That does pass. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much for having me.
For the time you guys gave all of the the seven communities the other day. That was very helpful.
Good. I'm glad it helped.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda, we have the public hearing for the Urban County Community Development Block Grant, and we have Christine Farah here from our senior services.
Great, thank you. So nice to have the tech support. So I'll start by just saying that Senior Services has managed the Community Development Block Grant program since 2009. The grant assists low-income seniors with essential home repairs. The service enhances safety and fosters greater independence for them. This funding is also crucial for meals on wheels with mobility challenges. Receive nutritionally balanced meals, a safety check, and a social connection with volunteer drivers. There we go. So the program is designed to benefit low and moderate income persons, prevent and eliminate blight, and the senior services' goals are to promote decent and affordable housing, extend senior independent living, and improve quality of life. We have completed 137 projects, five so far in 2022, and we have six other projects underway. Recruiting for applicants, of course, is a year-round effort, and the average age of the homeowners currently served is 69 years. The average length of homeownership in the township is 14 years, and the average income is just under $26,000. This year's allocation is a rough estimate of $50,000 with 70% or $35,000 for minor home repair and $30,000 for meals on wheels, or excuse me, 30% meals on wheels, $15,000. The maximum grant in a given year for a household would be $5,000, and they can apply up to three different years. So the lifetime maximum is $15,000, and this current allocation allows us to serve seven to eight households depending on the project costs. The income lev- excuse me, levels are set by HUD, and so the, excuse me, low income is described as 80% of the area median income, which this year is $50,150 for one person and $57,300 for two people. The homeowner must be, excuse me, 60 years of age or more. Projects primarily include repairs to improve safety, such as electrical, plumbing, and HVAC systems. We also handle accessibility needs such as handrails, ramps, and sidewalks, and here are a couple of projects that were done a couple of years ago to improve the accessibility to these folks' homes. The application process requires proof of residency, insurance, income, and several other items, and senior service staff are glad to guide people through the process. Sorry. So, oh, wow. Sorry, I have two of my Page One, so I'm gonna punt for Page Two. The township, the eligibility for meals on wheels is 62 years of age, and a person would have limited ability to leave home or have difficulty driving, grocery shopping, and/or preparing meals for themselves. Our current delivery is on Mondays, which could be a package of frozen meals, three or five, or finally, now we're back to hot meal delivery daily, Monday through Friday. We also have liquid nutrition that can be delivered monthly or as needed. A person would be home between 10:00 a.m. and 12:00 noon if they were receiving the daily hot meals, and of course participate in an in-home assessment. So year-to-date, we have served 61 customers. Forty-seven were new during this period. Ninety-two percent reside alone, and almost half are over age 85. Nearly 5,000 meals delivered year-to-date, which probably was going back a week or two ago, and 73 cases of insurer. And we do consider it a safety net because we have an emergency protocol. If someone doesn't answer the door, they're not there to receive the meal. We're making those calls to the emergency contact, and then in some cases, if we really can't raise anyone, the police department is helping us with a wellness check. And on occasion, those folks really do need emergency medical care, and we're really glad to be initiate that with the police department and the fire department. So the calendar for this program is here. With this approval next, it goes to the county and then to HUD, and with hopefully, we would have the authorization authorization to spend in fall of 2023, and the funds are good for two years. And again, applications are accepted year-round. And do you have any questions for me?
Before we do that, since it's a public hearing, we'll open it up to the public.
Oh, excuse me.
So if there's anyone that would like to speak a public comment about this item, we'll close public comment and take it back to the board. Are there any questions for Christine?
I don't really have a question, but a comment, but I want to thank you for all the work you put into obtaining this grant. I know there's a lot of hoops that you go through to do it, and it makes a big difference for the senior community that you have these funds and help to ensure the folks that need meals or home repairs get that support. So thanks for doing it.
It's just want to, again, like Martin, thank you. It's a wonderful program. It allows more of our seniors to stay in place in their homes, keep them safer. The wellness checks obviously are also critical in the meals, so thank you for all your work on this.
It's a team effort, and we appreciate it.
Dan? And and part of that team and part of the effort, really, and I thank you, Christine, is to be able to serve people in the community who have needs that are met by the two programs you're talking about, but also there are hardship abilities where either the taxes can be reviewed, solid waste in terms of GFL can be looked at. And over the past few years, both Christine, in terms of senior services and the assessing department through Darren Kratz, have worked hand-in-hand with the Treasury Department to make sure that we're trying to, if someone comes in one door, that we help them through all the different avenues. So if there are people that are in need, we have different opportunities to be able to assist them and avail them to different programs in the township. So thank you for everything that you're doing as part of that.
Darren appreciated the shout-out, too. He gave himself a little.
I should shout out to planning and building. I hope I did. If I if I didn't, they are instrumental to the minor home repair program.
Yeah, thank you. So then if there are no more questions, I'd look for a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Burnett.
Support.
Support by trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose.
That does pass.
Thank you so much.
Get some rest.
Yeah.
So next we have to consider the appointments of the zoning board of appeals, planning commission, construction code, board of appeals, electrical examining, and appeals board, and the international property code. Tonight Patty will not be able to be here with us, so I know we've all had a chance to look these over. I will mention that these are all reappointments. We are very thankful. These are township residents that agree to do this. Some are trustees that serve on these as well as trustee Ficki and Neil Burnett, and I think Michael, is he?
One new person.
Oh, yeah. Yep, yep, I'm first. He's not a resident, though.
Ex-?
No. So we have the residents that serve on here. We have trustees, and then we also have experts from the field. Our HRC representative is retiring, so we have a new HRC representative that would be taking that person's place. So that's why that one's not a resident, because it fills the HRC spot there. So but we are open to any discussions. If anyone has any questions about a specific person or an item, otherwise, just thankful they all want to continue to serve. Any questions or comments? Can we do one for all of them?
If there's no discussion and no disagreement, sure.
All right. And is there a motion to accept all at once?
Move to approve the reappointments and appointments as noted in the packet.
Motion by trustee Showstack.
Support.
Support by Craig Brook. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. That does pass. And thank you to everybody who serves. And next we have consider appointments to the board of review for the term beginning January 1, 2023, ending December 31, 2024. We have Darren Kratz, our assessing director.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. Just a little background on these these two appointments. This is something that we've never had here at the board at the township. We've never had alternate board of review members. We've only just had the three, and and it's worked out really, really well. But I think we're at a point in time now with having come through COVID and family vacations and different things like that, that it's it's time that we explore appointing two alternate board members. And and so I sat down with supervisor Wallace, and we kind of went over it and agreed that now is a good time to go, you know, go forward with this so that we don't end up in a situation where we have a board of review like we do tomorrow, and tomorrow morning we get calls from two of our board members that say, hey, we're sick, we can't come in. And then we got a whole, you know, whole host of other issues to deal with. So I think it's a it's a good a good time to move forward with appointing two alternative board members. Believe it or not, when we advertised for this, I was just hoping to get one good candidate, and and we actually had four really, really qualified individuals. And so that, you know, that made this process a little bit more difficult. We had to do some interviewing and sit down and talk to the folks. And and I think after the interviews were done, we ended up with two exceptional candidates. You know, the first candidate is Mike Wilson. The second candidate is Donald Barnes, the the third, both which I think are going to, if appointed tonight, serve the township really, really well. You know, our board of review, I take pride in our board of review, and I think we have probably one of the best boards of review in the entire state of Michigan, both with experience as duration on the board and experience, practical experience, being realtors and builders and developers and that kind of thing. Both of these gentlemen fall fall into those parameters. They both have real estate experience. They both have development experience, although it's a little bit limited on on that part, but they both have exceptional knowledge of of the township as far as real estate values and and things like that. So but I think more importantly than that, or as important as that, they have the temperament that I feel is necessary to sit on the board of review. They're both very reserved, not reserved, but laid-back. You know, they're not going to get aggressive if they have somebody who's a little a little aggressive at the board of review, and and I think our current board members have that, and I think these two have that as well. And and I think in from my experience, that's that's a key or critical characteristic to have if you're going to be sitting on the the board of review. So, you know, with that, I can I can answer any questions that you may have, comments. If not, I guess I'd look for a motion.
I did have some fun, actually. You pointed out that you were hoping just for one. At one of our township supervisor meetings, they were already surprised. We had, what, 12 for the ZBA vacancy, and I told them we had four for this, and they they don't even get one resident reaching out to sometimes. So we are blessed. We have a brain trust here. The residents here have such a depth of knowledge in every area, and they're willing to serve. So this truly is, it says a lot. When you say you have the best board of review, I truly believe our residents are the best out there.
Yeah, and and these two gentlemen, when you when you sit down and you 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 talk to them, you'll you'll be able to pick up on that right away. I mean, this may be a stepping stone board for them, although I can't believe that, for for wanting to serve on an additional board somewhere, maybe even the board of trustees at some point or whatever the case may be. But there's definitely a desire amongst these two gentlemen to not just stop at the board of review, but, you know, continue on at some point, so.
And we're lucky we have proof of that here. We have a gentleman who is our treasurer now, but what do you have, 25 or 35 years?
Almost 30.
Almost 30 years of experience on the different boards here, so.
So Brian's very familiar with the
Yeah.
process and the
Well, I will say, I've had the opportunity to meet the candidates, and they seem extremely qualified. And like Darren said, it's not just having the knowledge, but it's also, I won't use the word aggressive. I'll say that people are passionate in terms of their appeals, and you need to be be tempered and listen to them. And quite frankly, some of them are quite novel, and and they're interesting, and sometimes they pan out, and sometimes you do what you can do, and then you still say you have the right to appeal before the state. So and Dirk represents us well with the state and the tax tribunal. So I and I think it's wise to have backups, if nothing else, just to be able to have more continuity and have, you know, as transition occurs on that board and every board, have people who are ready and willing and able to step in. So I think that's great.
Yeah, so so my intention is to, if they're approved tonight, my intention is to have them sit through the board of review tomorrow, which tomorrow is just a, you know, real brief one. But then in March, I'm going to leave it up to them, but, you know, I'd like them to at least sit through a day, you know, so that they can get a feel for kind of how the board operates, what our procedures and best practices are and so forth. So it it is, I think it will be a a situation where in the future, we're going to have some turnover on the board, you know, and and I think it's I think it's prudent to to get, you know, to get that kind of that transition, if you will. Make sure these guys are familiar with the way it works and how we do things.
Other discussion, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by treasurer keeps.
Support.
Support by trustee Burnett. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That does pass. And next we have director of DPW, Noah Mahalsky, for our special assessment district, the SAD policy amendments.
All right. Good evening. Good to be with you this evening. I'm I'm here kind of cleaning up some error or kind of an oversight within the SAD policy. At least that's Olivia's words that she used for the kind of the terms that I want to change within that policy. And basically, you guys are well aware of the policy. It was approved late September of this year. As we're starting to put that policy into practice, we've had been approached by several different homeowners associations that have exposed kind of a niche within the language. And and these are neighborhoods that were developed maybe through three or four different developments, but they're under the umbrella of a homeowners association that represents all of those developments within the sub. Examples of this are the United Homeowners Association that's active within Bloomfield Township. Bloomfield Village is another good one where the development was built over several different phases. And right now, the policy prohibits someone who is on that HOA from representing that special assessment district if they don't live within that if they don't live within that district. So it kind of sets up a catch-22 where they may be a taxing authority. They may have deed restrictions that are enforced by the local homeowners association. But that homeowners association can't act on their behalf to circulate a petition within that community. So what we're looking is to strike that language within the provision. I put a track changes copy within there. There's only the two changes, the date at the top, and then removing that prohibition. And the recommendation is based on, again, if these homeowners associations can represent these residents in many different factions, we want to have them be able to represent the SAD as a whole going through these locations as well.
I can say, when we were writing this policy, I'll admit that this didn't even come to my mind because I never assumed that we'd have such a large project that would span so many all under. So it was surprising when somebody called and said, I tried asking questions and they can't talk to me. So this actually is also from the residents saying that they want to be able to ask questions and circulate things.
Yeah, what you'd be de facto doing is requiring that the board kind of dictates where they're, the people who make up the constituents of the board dictate where they are locational-wise throughout the development, which I don't think was the intention here. At least Olivia, who had walked you guys through the process and kind of, she said it was unintentional. So, you know, I trust that opinion. And it's, still, the process is unchanged. They have to sign if they're in favor. If they're not, they either don't sign or they sign, you know, that they're not in favor. But a no vote, or no vote is a no at that point. So, you know, having, giving the ability to these homeowners associations to represent the, you know, their development as a whole is really the crux of the situation.
Questions? You guys are a quiet group. Then I look for a motion. Motion by trustee Burnett. So trustee Ficki, all in favor?
Aye.
Much appreciated. Have a good evening.
Thank you for catching that, too. So next, we actually have treasurer keeps is going to be discussing a consideration of Verizon cell tower lease agreement.
Okay, if the board will remember, I think, when we started this term of this board in 2020, I guess, we started looking at this Verizon lease, and we're working on it since that point. Just to give you a little background of the community, some background on this cell tower. This is a cell tower that is on the township grounds. It was built in 1992. It was first occupied, I think, by Detroit Cellular, now which is Verizon, AT&amp;T, and I think Sprint at that time, although they may not have been early on. The tower is about 200 feet in height. Currently, it's occupied by AT&amp;T, Verizon, and Sprint, T-Mobile. It's used in terms of the capacity. And when we talk about capacity of a cell tower, it's both the vertical space within it. It's also how the, the type of equipment, the weight of the equipment, where the equipment is spaced, the structural capacity. So there's a lot of different aspects to it. Currently, it's about 98% occupied, so it's well utilized. Currently, AT&amp;T is, so any of that, it's kind of, we have the three users. AT&amp;T is, we're currently negotiating with, and Sprint has given us notice that they are considering options, including terminating or continuing staying on, which isn't always that unusual with a tenant. They're not exactly sure where they're at, but their lease is coming up to an end. Verizon lease, which you have in front of you, will commence on January 1. The term is initially a seven-year fixed term with a three and two-five-year options. Currently, the rent that they are paying is, I think, $30,000, roughly $32.5 a year. The rent will be going to $6,500 a month, $78,000 per year. That rent will also increase on a basis of 4% per year. In addition, there'll be a capital cost contribution from Verizon of $130,000 upon the commencement of the lease. Verizon also will be providing 11 underground conduits for four-inch fiber optics. Five of those will be provided to the township as part of this lease. The township is providing the space as-is. Verizon has no ability for any kind of early termination. And I will add that the lease was, I worked with IT with Gail Sadler, and Mark Roberts had worked on us negotiating this with Verizon. In addition, we also have input from the engineering department, the building department, HRC, and Collier's also provided a structural review of the load capacity and configuration. And with that, I think that's the cell tower lease.
Questions?
A comment, just great work. Really stuck to it, took a long time, but the results are wonderful. Thank you.
You've come a long way.
You have a lot of patience.
We got there. Good team effort.
I have a motion if I need.
And then that would be also the contingent upon me.
Yes, so I move to approve the Verizon lease agreement as presented and authorize the supervisor to execute the contract subject to the receipt of an unrevised agreement fully executed by Verizon.
Support.
Motion by clerk Brooke, support by treasurer keeps. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. That does pass. I'll be initialing every single one, just in case they can't sneak anything by.
No way.
All right. So the next we have consider the designation of bank depository for tax collection. Also treasurer keeps.
Statutorily, yearly, the township, the treasurer is required to come before the board and ask the board for approval in the account where the tax dollars go. The township has utilized JP Morgan, I think, for decades. And certainly, we did last year. So we've been served well by JP Morgan Chase, and it's my suggestion that we use them again for another year. So I'll make a motion accordingly.
Discussion, if not? We have a motion from treasurer keeps, support by trustee Shostak. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Next, we have consider approval of the 2023 board of trustees regular meeting schedule, presented by clerk Brooke.
The schedule for the upcoming year is prepared and in the packet behind item number 10. And if there's any questions, let me know. We hold regular meetings on the second and fourth Monday of every month, unless there is an adjustment to that based on holidays or religious observances. One adjustment's in the calendar for this coming year.
I wish there was an adjustment for January 9th. Maybe for future years, we could consider the Wednesday of the football game. Since Michigan, Michigan State like to be in there, but I'll accept it this year. But are there any corrections, questions, or comments?
I'd like to make a motion to approve as presented from clerk Brooke, the calendar for 2023.
Motion by trustee Murray.
Support.
Support by trustee Ficki. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. That does pass. So next we have approval of the payroll and vouchers for December 12. We've all had a chance to look them over, unless there's any changes. I look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. That passes. And the last?
I move for adjourned.
Motion by clerk Brooke.
Eight o'clock.
Support.
Support by trustee Ficki.
Thank goodness.
All in favor? I'll oppose. That does pass. Thank you, everybody. We'll see you in two weeks.